Yeah, just go around, we'll just go around. Okay. So, call the committee here, the whole. We have one addition from the chair here, or under.
It's on the recording.
Oh.
F two.
Mountain Street update. You've got that in writing now, anyway. Any other additions or additions?
Yes.
Yeah.
Agers and site policy.
H three, dangerous and unsightly policy. And any others?
Under Business Horizon, can we just add a note from what we discussed with P A C? I know it's still not finalized, but we talked about the single color for vinyl siding.
Yeah.
Just where we had Mr. Franklin last time.
Any others?
Sorry, do you want that?
H three. Well, no, that would be H four, I guess.
No, it's E one. Be E one.
Oh, you're gonna put it there?
Yeah, I'll consider it Business Horizon.
Okay, that'd be E one and the, well, the site will be, H three, I guess. Any others? The Queen Street look off. Yeah. Okay. With the H four. Well, it wasn't, I mean, I guess, we didn't really discuss it, I think we'll get more into detail with this. We'll make it H four. Queen Street look off. Get it formalized, isn't it? All those, well, someone move the agenda?
Who?
Tucker?
Second.
Any further discussion or additions? None? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any names? None. Okay. Minutes of August the nineteenth, everybody read those? Any errors or omissions? None?
Well, unless it comes with a high pay raise from transfer funds or change to City Hall.
Yeah, yeah. Well, what do you think you gotta think back? Yeah. Good that, yeah, we changed that to Town Hall. Not exactly, we have motion to approve. Some others? Tucker?
Yes?
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Business Horizon. So, you have, I just write down? P A C update.
Yeah, just where Mr. Franklin was in last time, or two different meetings. And one of his points of discussion was about building appearance at the P A C. Councilor Turnbull did bring up that we should put into our N P S and L U B review to have any vinyl siding required to be one color on a building, not multicolor. It still will have to be approved, like, they have to finish it, vote on it, and the property will approve it afterwards. But just for the sake of Mr. Franklin, so he knows that we are looking into this, that we add that in sort of as already into tonight's discussion.
Why just vinyl siding?
Well, I have to ask Peter that. Actually, we discussed it at the meeting, didn't we? Vinyl siding where it's most commonly something that's purchased and put on as one. We did, we did actually discuss the fact that if you say someone's painting, they could choose to go with, you know, a different color for every, everything they do. But that is far less likely to happen.
Yeah, I don't know. The other question I had, I sent that to you, you were just saying vinyl siding, including vinyl corners, vinyl trim around the windows, vinyl soffit, they should.
We'll take that one back to the P.
Yeah, yeah, because a lot of homes, it's trimmed out nice colors, so.
We need to.
Yeah. Yeah, so we take that back.
I also raised the issue of the definition of vinyl siding, because I can show you pieces of vinyl siding that looks like them.
Exactly, yeah, so there's lots of discussion, at least it's being discussed.
Yeah, that's right. And in one way, shape, or form, we'll likely have, yeah, we'll have it in there, it just depends on which counselors are there, come, at that point in time, does that have discussion?
Then you can break back up the side of it.
Yeah.
And also that it moves forward now, so we can't go after those who are multi-colored now, it's just, it's moving forward, so. Unfortunately.
If it can get through.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, cool.
We did bring up architectural studies, that could be a requirement, the promise to come back goes on, but per now, we're still can proceed with having something in there.
Yeah, we don't wanna take off our old seers.
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. Moving on to the C A O's report. All right, so, under Development Officer, four development permits issued. Accessory building, accessory building, replacement of an existing building that was demolished in addition to a fortune deck and the change of ease from one dwelling to two dwellings. Building inspection, there are five building permits. And for renovation under single-family, renovation of a single-family dwelling, repairs to a restaurant, construction of a shed, and construction of a garage, and construction of a fortune deck. Fire inspections, fourteen Burke Street, deficiency expand, thirty gates are renovated, fifty-one Water Street, deficiency expand, thirty gates are renovated, sixty-one Water Street, deficiency expand, thirty gates to renovate. Fire department, I have no report, Tom, prickles my report. This is where the information center, in August, the average fifty visitors a day with a monthly table of eleven hundred ninety-two. We had beautiful weather this month, it was hot, it very well raining. We get a lot of visitors that are just passing by waiting for the fair. We continue to use the background and lay their paints and rocks for visitors while they wait. The kindness meter was brought in the V I C, and we had a new T V screen installed that shows visitors a calendar of events happening in the town and surrounding areas, as well as tide times and weather forecasts. Scholar days was the eighth to the eleventh, the worst wrath began on August twenty-ninth, bringing lots of visitor to the town. Congress, W N D L, K D N festival began on August tenth and lasted for ninety, bringing lots of French residents to the area. It was a nice asset to have our student Alexis here who speaks French. It was a super busy week in the area, with every accommodation being bought from Annapolis to Yanuff. We are hoping for busy September. Office of the C A O, the second round of the Housing Acceleration Fund. The application was, the second round was completed by Rob and submitted on Friday, September thirteenth. Shore Road culvert flooding. So, on July seventh, twenty twenty-four, the on-call culvert works. Employee received the call of Washington on the shore road around four A M. The shoulder of the road was eroded, and it was observed at that time that the house located at fifteen Shore Road at Pretto's basement while missing. The culvert was plugged with debris which included stick, branches, and some rock off the bank. The owner was notified by the Director of Culvert Works. On July eleventh, the flash flood occurred around four thirty P M and caused more debris to collect at the end of the culvert. Debris caused the culvert to back up quickly and erode the edge of the road again. Flood caused house number fifteen to also flood. The fire department called the culvert basement again, and once the water subsided, the end of the culvert was cleaned every. The culvert was not collapsed, it had a lot of debris in it that had debris with the gas. Property owners were contracted again to inform them of the incident. The property owner has put in, put the town on notice that they intend to recoup the damage to the home from the town, and the town's insurance company had been notified, and they have opened a file and assigned a destiny to investigate. Yeah, in regards to the ditch along my side, there's any thought, opening, I was digging in my culverts today, actually, they were all full of ground coming off the road and across the road. But I know that's always contentious issue, because it's a provincial highway, you know. Any thought of cleaning some of it?
We attempted the culvert last week, actually, a hundred eighty feet of culvert to replace everything. We're down by the druthers when I replaced that piece, it was a horse piece, actually have a culvert in stock.
Yeah.
So, we are having to work out there. But we won't all do this year, because it's come to a happy price to replace all those culverts and get yourself through there soon. So, I'll do what I can that's within the budget this year, and then over the next year or so.
They get overwhelmed, that's why I keep digging, I reach in and clean them all as far as I can.
Down by the druthers, I have a twenty inch hole, so it's up to us.
If you put twenty inches there, do you have to go down further? That will pass.
That's, that was an eighty foot run, I think, if they were long. So, there's a lot of, we have most of those installed, that's why we're, we're gonna take some of the company may have, are operating most of the first year.
But until the highways does something, all we're doing is collecting their water, so.
That's, that's the issue.
Yeah. It's the issue. It's not the issue. Yeah. I mean, it's on the town side.
Yep.
They, they draw a wall by way. Yeah.
But this one, when it happened, they catch the stuff on Mount Shutt, and it touched anything on our road.
No, I ask, because my driveway is now before it's as well through, and I said, can't you come over and dump some stuff there? And it's, oh, you can't do that. So, yeah. Hey, that's just, at least you only have something, so, because the one I drew was only. Much of the culvert.
That's what we're doing now, so it has to be done.
Any questions from the C A O?
Do we know approximately when we may hear back about the housing accelerator? Any timelines applied to that?
Don't refer to broad dates or anything, email that.
I'll give back to you, I don't wanna, I don't wanna say what I think it is, because I can't verify that. I believe it's the end of October.
Okay.
But please don't hold on to that, I will get back to you once I verify.
Oh, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay. Any others? Director of Public Works.
Um, the work I'll take some courses that I require, so I can see use that I need, so I can apply for my water distribution renewal. Think, um, so, that's for the truck. I did hear back on Friday that the repairs have completed the truck. So, we haven't had it for six months, so having inspected before we take it back. We should have it back this week. The tractor, we did have a really bad oil leak on, one of the main hoses broke on it that actually runs the engine, we're very lucky we didn't lose the engine. And there's multiple other hoses that maybe, that they recommended be repaired or replaced, just because they have the same wear on the miss that hose is broke. So, we will likely have that done. Bathroom's downtown, we replaced all the toilet paper dispensers with lockable units, so, to prevent the theft of the toilet paper. And we did have.
The old sandpaper in there for a reason.
Ah, that's a good one. Lace it, lace it. Um, the baby cha, bathroom down by Shoreline Restaurant, somebody broke baby change station. Looks like somebody tried to sit on it, truthfully. And we had to order, do one of those, so I ordered two, so we have an extra one in stock if anything happens again. Said well said during more crime rally, we had lots of great compliments about the bathrooms, and especially the shower on the back of the B station. So, transfer station, we now have a full year of numbers since I started open after the transfer station. And I did talk to municipality accountant there, and since we installed the debit machine, revenues are almost doubled, so it's, it's doing a good job, for sure. We did have one incident with a two-wheel drive truck number one, it backed into a tree. So, we're gonna laugh, but he feels so bad that he apologizes like every second day, so.
Yeah, they know that you're not self-driving trucks.
Well, I asked him, and so the tree was quite agitific in the first street. He takes it up pretty good, so. So, we did have one employee off on personal leave, he is, he is back to work. He came back to work early. And every employee in the Public Works Department did take a vacation during the month of August, which was, which was great. The guys have been working extremely hard, and they deserve a break. Uh, summer students, we had four summer students this year, as one was for the Water Commission, and one was place water, and two were town-related. I think they did, they were a great asset. We had two of them that worked on the bearings all summer long, they worked on the flowers all summer long. And you can see our flower box is downtown, you know, since the fall, it really bloomed, the colder weather has helped it grow a lot. We watered them two, three times a week, everything down through there, but the heat this summer was very hard on the, very hard on the flowers. But having the summer students for the two months is really good for us, they installed the sidewalks, all the way from the old K F C, all the way down through town, the Apple's Walk, all the parks, you know, we did a lot more this year. They actually started working at the old Tybee property, they deleted all of the pathways except for a little section where the pathways that are up there. It's, uh, it's been great, and on the water commission side of things, they painted a bunch of the water commission buildings inside. They did the, they painted all the floors and the walls of the lower houses in Spence Cove. And they actually washed half of the tanks, our big water risk of our tanks, they're out there both three levels. They did about a staging, and the guys are gonna finish it next month with the left, the tanks that are all nice and clean and white. And we're gonna have the one tank repaired on, where the, where you see all the rust forming on top of the tank. Or pretty something you can paint it, so.
Maybe we can send later council thinking students, yeah.
They did a great job, and one of them, she's been here three years, and we didn't even wanna have her this year again, so it was great that she was able to train all the other new people, so.
Yeah. Let's see, get something drafted up, this is it, okay, Jim.
So, is there any questions on the report before I do the Mountain Street report?
Was the, was the corner, personally, were Queen Street satisfied with the renovation?
I think so, I haven't heard anything, so, usually when I don't hear anything, I'm good, so.
Okay.
So, the Mountain Street report, I think everybody's got a copy of it there. We're moving, in my, my opinion, I think, I think Tom's gonna agree, Dexter definitely agrees this, they're ahead of, they're ahead of schedule where we thought they would be. They're currently just finishing all the laterals to provide water and wastewater, sanitary laterals to the buildings from West Street to Victoria. The other section from West to King's all done, pressure testing's been completed, and it's ready for disinfection of the water main. So, we think by the end of the week, that we'll be ready to do pressure tests on the water main from West Street to Victoria, then we'll be able to do the disinfection in the main Italians. After that, then we'll be starting the curb so they can do the sidewalk. And then once the sidewalk's done, do the asphalt. We did have some infection testing done, we got the full results back today. There's a couple areas that of concern, the roadway, they were, at first, when you walked on, you'd watch and move, but as they turned and dry out, you couldn't see it as much, so they did a roller test on them. I think there was four spots, wasn't one correct, I think it was four spots that needed to be dug down six inches of new aggregate applied, so, and that's right from, right from the engineers, so. Otherwise, I think we're in good shape, and.
Really, I have a couple questions, just because you're whining your sidewalk, so you're gonna be. Some of those properties have dropped out to the sidewalk, what happens with those? Are they gonna be relocked or reinforced, or?
We'll have to cut back and shave the banks, there's, there's the one that's there.
Yeah, I'm aware of the one.
Yeah, I've, I've talked to him, he's got some plans that he wants to do some stuff up front with such, so. And I'll, and I'll, so. And I think it's for extras, that it really hasn't been heard any, and they can cheap, cheapen mine on, so.
Yeah.
But the person that come in has, good or fair, I guess, we'll say.
Good, any questions for Ed? Adrian and Phil Pepper? Okay. Director of Finance?
Hey, so the reports are there in your package. An interesting audit that we just finished up, that was, we hit our schedule and had our special council meeting, so the statements are fast, getting them for September thirtieth. There is one item here should mention, so in the capital budget, I T equipment is required this year before next year's budget. So, our file server reached the end of its useful life, that needs replacing, that'll be eight to ten thousand. It was actually missed in the capital budget, we were aware that that was probably gonna come up, and it should get done. It should, we shouldn't leave that, it's something we don't wanna leave at risk. And there's also probably a number of laptops that might be required, but there's one for sure, Bailey, mine. And with the new council, we may need one or two more. So, the management team is looking to get council to approve twenty thousand in addition to the capital budget for a new file server and laptops. I'm motion for that to be recommended to council.
Ben's laptops like Brandon do, so just give that to someone after.
I'm still using the ten-year-old laptop, so, everything's web-based, you don't need a lot now.
Uh, how many, how many laptops? So, it'll be probably three laptops, and then?
One for sure, I'm sure Tom, if you, uh, if you're.
My, the, the plan, plan is, uh, at least two open seats, so, be two, at least two new council members. And so, we'll give, get two new laptops for those two, and two laptops that are, like, President Turnbull's and the mayor, reconditioned for use within the organization, so I'll throw them away, so we, it is, we'll have. I'll be weapon-like to leave before I had it over. And, uh, so, that's what normal, right, like, the weapons, so. Get them ready so we can use them for some students or work placements and things like that. We're always scrambling to find a computer for them to use, so. Also, we've got, we need an extra one for E M O, because I think Dan's the only one on our team that doesn't have a laptop, right? So, we don't take our laptop, but that and Dan can't carry his desktop, so.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that'll be put to use, so not, uh, in other ways.
Then I'll make a motion that we take to council the approval of funds for new file server, multiple laptops, and refurbishment of the two laptops from the outgoing elected officials.
All set and aight. Is there any I T grants that they're looking for to help? No. No, quit.
I worked in I T for six years.
Go to Dell, maybe a little bit.
We don't wanna sign it.
Well, yeah. Something, well, we can't use our servers, so.
Yeah, something that we've known about for a while, so it has to be done.
How old is the current system?
Uh, I'm not sure, I can't remember.
Each five years. Yeah. And the, the current server could be used as a backup, to store backup, use the backups on, on. So, again, it's something, in a certain way, used till it dies, and then it dies, it's perfect, so. And the current server, do they come with built-in protection, hack deal for hacking and spamming?
I, I think it's all, it depends with the firewall, but I'm not expert in that area.
Yeah, some of them come down with built-in, built-ins in the BIOS and stuff, so.
Awesome.
Yeah, that's, yeah. Any other discussion on that? We have room in our capital budget. Does it mean we have to move something around?
In addition to the capital budget, but we would still, we're still gonna be well within the capital budget total from what was originally planned, because we were spending less, there are certain items that we will spend less on. So, certainly twenty thousand on a multimillion dollar capital budget is not going to put it over whatever it actually was.
All those are favorite motion that's on the floor. All right. So, I, it is?
So, insurance, as Tom had mentioned in his report, the two extreme rainfall events caused problems with one of the properties. Our insurance adjuster is working with them. There was an unfortunate correspondence between the two of them that one was waiting, they were both waiting for each other to respond, and it turns out, one had sent an email with one missing letter in the email address. People were not happy, so I hope that gets resolved. Uh, the rental units, so, fifty-three Mountain Street, Old Chicken Coop, as we call it, all the rents are up to date. Residential dwelling was not up to date as usual, and so, a notice to quit for rental where yours was delivered, and that'd be fifteen days for the amounts to be, all that rents to be paid, and current rents to be paid in full. And they were paid within the fifteen days, with a promise that it would never get to that point again. So, we'll just keep monitoring and see how that goes, but good to see that it got paid. Uh, in the data rental, one euro is up to date, and we have the postpaid check, we're up to December twenty twenty-four. All you would ask, add that to the report. Final property tax bill should be going out end of September as usual, well, end of September, first week of October. They're, they're basically right on time, no delays or anything. Uh, the Queen Street look off, I think we'll be looking at that later on this evening. Town Hall, we're now set up as our office, and we can accept charitable donation receipts, so those are for tax purposes for individuals who want that, to donate money. And just a reminder again that there is E A P for elected officials, again, that was new within the last year. So, the main thing is, there's a phone number, if anybody else has more questions, please ask me, and I can direct anyone to any resources if they'd like. W C B, new hire rate this year, the main point here is just that we, we were above the industry average due to our claims. Could have been lower, had we been at the industry average, we would have saved about twenty-two hundred dollars a year. So, that's not a, not a huge amount. And then the lowest possible rate, we would have saved fifteen thousand, but that's almost unheard of to be at, at that point. But just a reminder, we always, we need to always keep a safe environment, it's for safety of our people financially. It's for the safety of our people financially, the WCB. And annual provincial financial reporting, so the CIP and, well, the FIR normally due September 30th. Just arrived last week and no up, no, no reprieve on when it's due. September 30th is still, so I guess if you really just get it out, it still has to be done by September 30th. We still don't have the capital investment in the CIP. That's the, the large capital budget. And other items. Nothing too significant in there. Delay things, is there any questions I can answer them?
Comments? No, I think we've heard enough of financial matters tonight.
Well, that's good because I can get to on my second report, the operating capital. Yes, I thought you were done.
No, I knew we were done.
So the statement of operations, just the, the summary page is there. I know it's not that much to go on, but I, we, we do look, I look at it in detail and we talk about it at the management level more on the detail level. At this point in time, there is nothing, no large variances that we've noticed that we've come across in the operating budget. Capital budget, that's the one with the colors, the page and a half. I'm not going to go through all of the items. It's, it's a composite of my information giving you whatever budget was, what we spent to date and Rob's input on the grants and Ed's input on the status of some of the projects. And it's really information purposes so that you can scan it and see if you have any questions. We're here to answer them. Any questions on any of those capital problems?
No questions, I guess.
That's it?
That's it. Moving on to our special constable, usually the most popular person in town.
There are any.
There is.
Um, they do some slightly, in a preference for you to see the last end, which you quote, contractor put within the path, we covered the demolition costs and also covered the cost of removing any coastal items that are not suitable for the C and E on generalization. Numbers said they made very slight control inspection. 53 Rack Road, owner contacted me about the site and intends to demolish as soon as possible. Owners stated that they are now, we're reaching details for random demolition. Just received a recent email from that that's not included on this. That said they, they believe they are third in line for, for getting the generalization done. A5 Church Street, grass been cut around the site. We have a small partnership of edge of J between the one and parking lot beside the home. Owner agreed to maintain the property moving forward. On 45 and 40 Street, owner has also cut the grass around that site as well. And fresh have been grown up on side of the structure. 2600 Euro, property is now under new ownership. Conversation with the new owner assured me the property would be maintained moving forward. Reasons like this, for major improvements in property, the removal of the neighbors into the waste series of lawn care. Previous property concerns appear to have been resolved. Remained lane received a phone call requesting a site visit inspecting for the conditions of the tenants. Investigated claim and has since started to file to take the building department to review. And also sent a notice, since this report has been on September the ninth, given 14 days, requesting some kind of statement on what their intent is to repair, repair the site. 267 Shore Road, back of truck has been cleaned to waste. Owners are reminded to get, get again to remove the truck to rent being viewed as abandoned or derelict. 177 Clean Street, owner came to speak with me concerned the condition of their home and discuss a maintenance plan for moving forward. They have cut the grass and started to prep the home for paint, also sourced some material for the home repairs. Currently is, currently the owner is showing some commitment to resolve any issue. 6 First Avenue, the property is undergoing major cleanups around the exterior of the property. Pressure's been cleared, the industrial equipment has been gathered, the meat and files decided the lot. Owners said to me your stone structure will, where they look to replace the roof and paint the building. 56 St. George Street, received an in-office complaint concerning the long grass located on the quarter lot. Long grass is a concern from the neighborhood field, it may be a fire hazard. Investigated found grasses to be overgrown. The lot appeared to be more than a key, a manicured lot, sent the owner a notice on August 23rd. Again, with a day timeframe, requesting a reply. I've yet to receive a reply and will send another notice hoping to get some kind of conversation started regarding the lot. Is there any questions concerning the construction of the site?
That quarter lot, is that quarter of George and West? Yeah.
I want to say yes.
For sale now, is it? Yeah.
It's not part of it, is it now at least? If not the whole lot, at least.
Yeah, so, so I know.
Notice they can get two lots that's there, one on one side, but one on the other.
Good.
Um, aside from that, we've got protective services report, CCTV report, all cameras were operational. Real issues or concerns to report. Parking control, several parking tickets were issued during the rally. Main areas, the monitor in front of the fire station, the handicap parking spot downtown. The area in front of the fire station could benefit from having wooden barricades along the road to discourage parking and large events. All the cones that were put in place seem to have just disappeared. People snuck into park randomly, so maybe some longer barricades might be a little harder to steal. Civic address saying we had six-point changes to the NASCAR system. Went over to accommodation, now civic sign and one parking building. Required confirmation on number of units has also been updated into the NASCAR system. Dog control, there was no issues or concerns to report. Crossing errands, first day back to school brought an abundance of traffic. Notices of parents in purge and only so many parents, grandparents or grandparents, et cetera. That can be present while dropping off students may be a consideration. Due to lack of parking in a small congested area, having extra people on site to see their children off the first day of school becomes a hazard for all children in the area. Some children end upwards of eight plus adults arriving to see them off to the first day of school. Not enough parking to accommodate everyone on the first day back. Parents were requested to assist the public on how to navigate the changes on Mountain Street, elementary and high school. This request would be for approximately two weeks in total, which I believe since that's ended, I think it's early.
The, the right turning lane there off the street, working well?
I've been up there three times, the first two days and every once this week, and I'm happy with it. The only, the only thing that we noticed was we're going to extend the, the painted lines going on Victoria Street back up, up Street Street a little bit. Just to, as they, there was only one day, I just lived with the center lanes backed up, had two buses in it and six cars. So they're back, lay up the street, so there was no lines to say go here, go there. And the only thing that was noticed was that some of the staff of Washington Elementary School was parking in the first two spots. You can hear the dark, dark parking lot, they parked in the third or fourth block. Help a lot of traffic, because the parents would pull in, drop their kid off and go.
Well, for the most part, and then.
It's been, it's been great for change.
A lot of good compliments and he seemed pretty happy about the changes, which is good to be more happy to change. Vending licenses, some early confusion surrounding vendors' start times for war cry rally. Clear expectations surrounding vendor arrival time should be explained to rally organizers. We can ensure a detailed explanation to vendors. Have vendors arrive more than 24 to 36 hours prior to your best start time for purchase camping along the avenue. Some early scale of this. Taxi licenses, civil battle between cab companies was escalating. I'm not sure if that's since settled down at all. In this case, I want to say no news, it's good news. Solid waste management, 13 Mountain Street, spoke to the property owners, see what measures were made regarding the truck being relocated. They mentioned being targeted or discriminated against due to other vehicles being left sitting for several months in town without being made to move them. Stated that their nationality was a reason for them being targeted when no one else was being made to do the same thing they are. I assured them that all parties in town have received notices for their vehicles sitting idle the same. I assured them that all parties who have vehicles saved for several months in time without being moved, grass around, around the vehicle will receive a notice in essence to, or to verify the vehicles on track and then maintain their areas surrounding the vehicle. 78 Second Avenue, site has been cleaned of all bags of shingles, no residual waste visible at this time. Solid waste issue has now been resolved. Bylaw violations, 65 Water Street, the intake ban on the exterior buildings now, now is fully installed in attempts to reduce the noise and interfere with the equipment. No measurements have been taken to verify its functionality. However, at this time, the matter between the property owners appears to have been resolved with the improvement of the hood. 133 First Avenue, we go past the site, notice a small block of pigeons eating the dish in the front area. Just took a copy of the biological review with the tenant responsible in attempts to educate him surrounding the birds. While on site, the tenant got very upset, threatened to take me to court for harassment discrimination. Then it was not perceptive to conversations surrounding feeding the birds and had that slam on the door closed before we could properly discuss the bylaw. While one day the bird feeder was seen in use and attempts to keep the feed off the ground remained with alliance. 14th Street, received an in-office complaint from a tenant who requested a site visit to inspect their current living conditions after recent renovations. Investigated the site, found it to be a violation of the amendment, rental housing standards by law for the town of Big Bay. Took pictures of the deficiencies and compiled an information package to mail to the owner with the bylaw and this request that are implied in 14 days. Notices sent September 6th. 33 First Avenue, received a call, end of abundance of solid waste line, both roadside and the ditch. In front of residents, have time of the call, there were workers on site believed to be cleaning the trash in the area, but the caller was unsure if they would collect all the trash in the ditch as well. Investigated claim, found several bags of trash lying in the ditch across from the residents. The trail found in and around the waste, led to the identification of a suspect being one of the tenants of First Avenue. Sent an email, notes and pictures to housing to inform of the situation on September 3rd. As far as I'm aware, it was cleaned up that day, I believe.
Yeah.
It didn't escalate any further than that. Is there any questions on the, on the report?
Any questions? 33 First is one of our regulars.
It, it definitely is. Brand, since, since having the meet and greet with the housing, it has been a better working, working relationship with them and getting things done a lot quicker. It seems, seems to be great work with right now. So that's, that's been an improvement.
Solid Waste has also been there to talk to the fellow tenants.
Yeah, they've been trying to educate people. Problem is, is it's like a real lawnmower with people that don't know someone, I mean, one person needs, and it's like you've got to start the education process over again, unfortunately.
Just reminding, like, you have the lease checking?
Yeah.
So I have a library, same day.
Yeah.
It's like a, a place chair. Okay, any other comments for, or questions for earlier?
I was mentioning that they removed the signs from the seats.
They're, they're gone in town. Yeah, they're gone in town. And I haven't hit downtown today, so you can put anything else up in his place, but as of yet, the ones that were previously there are not there anymore.
Just turning around, so that's sad. Okay, Greg Corden there.
All right, you can see my report's a bit short this time. Just two things I wanted to touch on. Number one, as the CEO said, the housing action plan version two was put in September 13th at noon, so I got in for our deadline. The document size is about 42 pages. If you want to put yourself to sleep, I can send you a copy. I did want to take this time to note and thank my coworkers for allowing me to come upstairs and work and focus on it, which was really nice of them to let me do. Um, I discussed it and it's, it's just a nice spot to be able to come upstairs and really focus in. So I want to thank my coworkers for letting me do that. So that's in and I will, I will find out the, the date when we find out about, about that application. The other thing I wanted to touch on was because of timing at our last meeting, the whole, I couldn't say that we had gotten approved grants, but at that time we had. But they say in those, when we receive those, if you have to keep it confidential until they make their announcements and they never tell you when they hate that announcement.
Yeah.
Uh, so you can see the, the grants that we got approved for was a beautification grant. The Community Works, which is the assistant administrator for water operations, the tourist ambassador and the provincial capital assistance program. So I have a running total at my desk and to date in the five months that I've been employed here, I have brought in 114,656 dollars to the town in grants.
And just to quickly, if you know right off the top of the head, what did we spend on beautification the last year or so?
Well, we've, I think we've got that beautification grant the last four, five years.
And then everything else.
And then it's, it's, it's been 50,000 a year.
Yeah.
I'm gonna laugh on that.
Usually our, I think in the last two years, our portion's been a little bit more, so it ends up being 42 or 43.
Yeah.
Kind of true. It's, it's pretty close.
It's a different amount of money spent on that stuff. Any comments, sir? Other than the applause there. Thank you. That's the first applause in years, so. Thank you. Did you hear any officer?
Well, I don't think there was, I had some more reports, but it's definitely ramping up, so. Lots of emails circulating, potential candidates.
Well, that's good. Good, taking one of the, the, let's see, volunteer. Oh, it's one of the, Will's paying for our meals. According to you, I have. Okay.
Who's that, Brad, you want to? Have those, the gift cards. Everyone wants them.
Yes, of course, volunteer. They live just near Victoria, uh, I know the house, I actually picked this lady up from the airport a couple of years ago. That's why we consider looking at crosswalk, et cetera, so something that I guess could be investigated and look at the as we.
Yeah.
We've been in her capital.
The condition of Victoria Street sidewalk.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's paved, but so it's wavy and bumpy and that kind of stuff, so.
I haven't walked that strip yet. And then the worst part was by the old KFC where there's some water damage. I mean, it's real horrible.
No.
Even just a little patch here and there, but probably solved or concerned. I really was kind of confused to find a park that was that badly damaged. Yeah, I think what I understand, what she, I, I didn't do any, I didn't do any local research on it, so. Objectively, get back to everybody's. You know, there's one spot where we had a crosswalk and it got removed, so it goes along this little bit, but it's not broken up or anything, you know. Started to build a church. Yeah.
And I think right along by the music store, it's a little bumpy there as well.
Which is a cross, yeah.
Probably, yeah, just there, because everybody crosses, it breaks you down. But nothing, yeah, same thing. I looked at the other day when I parked Friday, I didn't see any. Yeah, investigate. Okay, letter from the transition house, wanting us to light up the lighthouse. I had another call about that, so not from these, from somebody else, so I think the colors were the same. Was it blue or purple? Purple, I think there's a purple light bulb in the lighthouse now.
Six or seven colors on it.
Yeah, they're all, the colors are there. Just leave them there, change it.
That was the herd when it found that purple.
Yeah. Yeah, change up my end table lamp that's in the lighthouse, so. Yeah, yeah. So we usually do the lighthouse because we don't have the lighting here to light it. That's what it's been this way, so. So we can just tell them we're doing, we're gonna light up the lighthouse, which we've done before. And someday Karen's gonna notice the end lights going off. Been seven years since she hasn't yet. Okay, we can maybe just email back and say we're gonna light up our lighthouse, if they're calling. New business. EFE Aqua, Mike brought this forward.
Yeah, I brought this forward. As you know, there was a firefighter diver that they just found a week ago, I guess. So the town, the fighter Herman ordered an Aqua Eye on, on Tuesday night. Came in off Thursday, so what? Adam Leavings and Adrian LeBlanc worked at it, worked at it, and they went down. The next day they found the crap in that work. So obviously it was a very valuable piece of equipment. A local diver team went down and, and found them. It's a it is an Aqua Eye, an advanced underwater scanner using the latest in ultrasound and artificial intelligence technologies to identify human bodies underwater. Aqua Eye sent a solar sonar pulse out to 50 meters or 165 feet and listens for the return echo. Echo Aqua Eye then decides which echoes match the echoes of the human body and indicates the location of the missing person on the screen. Aqua Eye can scan one acre of water in under two minutes. So when they ordered it, they thought it was five thousand dollars. Ended up being eleven thousand dollars. So uh, I guess I'm here to ask if we could maybe under grant organizations, if there's any money left. Or some of the COVID money that we uh, we send the five thousand to the fire department to purchase that, to purchase that piece of equipment.
They have their budget. Do you have any money left in their budget?
I don't know.
Cause we don't know either, so.
I don't know.
Yeah.
But uh, it is a, like, it is a nice story that uh, you know, we, we had the equipment to find them.
Yep.
Um, and that uh, the family has some closure for that that either, so.
We have money left. Is there a gusher with the municipality?
That's what I suggest, we maybe look at is talk to them, find out what the total cost is above and beyond. And already discussed it before and they hadn't cut the, the warranty whatever on product or something, it seems.
That's right, warranty.
Yeah, I'd rather consider what the whole cost is and then reach out to the municipality and see if they would consider uh, half of it. Cause we, you know, we do a coastal fishing community and.
All the other fire departments will be used there.
Yeah. That's right, or will be used.
Yeah.
Yeah. But yeah, it's a nice piece of equipment, so. Anyway, I can get the, I'll get the invoice from the fire department, give it to Tom.
With the warranty.
At all, yeah.
Yeah, no such bylaw, neglect the warranty for a year or two. You know, how they get abused sometimes, problems. The only other thing was a little concerning to me is the post about the whole story. And led to some angry comments about the R C P, the dive team and stuff and, you know. If you see some of those responses on Facebook, yes. Although they did, they did counter it with, we have a good relationship here with the locals, but you wanna maintain good relationship with all the bodies you work with.
That's right.
Yeah, so people are taking that story and twisting it and stuff, but that's the nature of social media, so.
That's right.
Yeah, but you can get the invoice and bring it back, but I don't know if we have money in our grants or donations, anything left yet. Bring it back to the council.
Yeah. Thank you.
Coastal protection. This was our priority.
Yeah, I asked for that to be a beer. Tom, thank you for finding the interview from uh, Luna Burke to, to add to this. Um, I, I just thought it was important, we tried Kickstarter conversation about this and maybe it means we pick a planning date to talk about it a little bit more. Um, Luna Burke's still the only sponsor that actually has one, I think, an actual coastal protection act of, or policy of sorts. Um, you know, and as we all know, the province had one almost ready to go and then decided it was our responsibility, one of their own. Yeah, uh, that's, just wanna kickstart the conversation, not, not to, not trying to get it in done tonight on it, but to um, maybe come up with a plan going forward. Because we're, you know, we're already talking about development down the south end, potentially, you know, need, need this far, so we need to make sure that we're prepared for anyone that's coming at us in the future of what we wanna do. Uh, and even when it comes to grants and other, you know, upgrades in the town. What are we doing to make sure that we're looking not just at today, but a hundred years or however many years the infrastructure can last down the road?
You're gonna see some rushing to build in those areas that probably shouldn't be built in anymore, and that's why it needs to get done. And I heard that from one developer, we're not, we're not too fearful of building where they wanna build. I would be, because I see the erosion going on there. And then they're gonna come to us and say, where's the bank? Any comments on that, or?
I guess the, we did briefly touch on that at the D A C meeting.
Yeah.
And uh, Chris is calling, saying I think just like this, fourteen months from for Luna Burke. So it's not gonna be a quick process.
Yeah.
You know. Quick, I mean, it's not like a couple of months.
Yeah. The, the other thing he says, they'd actually been looking at it extensively prior to that, because they have a lot of uh, foreign landowners who are already doing things that the locals go, hey, what are you, what are you doing? Uh, so they felt the need for it and they worked on it even before the province was looking at it, so. Um, so we'd probably have a ways to go to catch up to where they were starting at when the province said, no, we're not doing it, so we're, um, yeah, probably find out where, where we should be and.
Although they've done a lot of work that we can use.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean that, that, we don't have to read a bit, but I think it's a, a summary, summary, that summary. Yeah.
It's a good conversation to have, cause we've got three sides of water, most of it's already built, but you have to think of the future, if something burns down or something has been replaced, what do you do then?
Part of the port process, I said on the port, you know, looking, well, they gotta replace the marginal work, as you see it starting to drop, if you drop down the work. But now they've had to change their whole plans and they just had coastal protection studied up and they're being told that besides expanding, you gotta go up. Significantly up over the next few years, so. I can send that report out, I, did I send? It's just, it's more for interest for council, but the port is varying up from the original plans now, because they may have to know the new work or raise that deck. And they're also being taught, told they may have to raise that new brickwork that they just built. They have to look at a hundred-year exposure or something. Yeah, can you bring it to the next planning committee, is that, is that, that not? It's part of that. Bring it back to the committee of the whole. The coastal protection. Luna Burke's.
It's the.
Yeah, just to tear apart, just to get into details of it, yeah. Okay, it's on the agenda, it's in the agenda, so. Well, and safety policy.
Sometimes go upon to develop the resources for the acres and certain premises and N B A. With all the time to do, we have to, I suppose, there. I do, and I hope that you do as well, but suggest, some suggestions or changes to that policy. And I like that we actually set a date to talk about that exclusively and maybe reopen that policy and see what else we can add or subtract with the authorities' help to have some input and see what else we can use. I have some ideas that I asked Tom about, but I think we need a little bit of that first, so.
Yeah, I, I think as well, of course. The M G A is just the basics. As long as the province is, you get it, that's just, it's almost like the building, you can do this, but if you wanna do more, go ahead. Subject to the legal thing, of course. So you're looking for a date? Yeah, sometime after the first meeting in November. Yeah, with all the other contentious issues, sometime after the first meeting in November, so. Yeah, we don't figure it, but that's. What works for people.
More.
More? Maybe a committee of the whole evening, we have, you know, committee of the whole is gonna be an hour, 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 we have another meeting, some meeting at the same time. That work. Or do you want another night? Charlie.
Well, even before, maybe it can be all.
Well, even before.
Long as you're like doing the day, right, instead of keeping it longer.
Yeah. She said she doesn't mind. Well, why don't we set us for six o'clock for the next committee of the whole, policy review meeting? Yeah. Kind of stick.
That's committee.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just, you know, really it's to set the agenda of what we want to accomplish, that first meeting, so. Is there a note, H four? Yeah. Things pretty booked up. Just for information, Dr. Hardey's home, so.
Gary's love that.
So as you know, we, we were requested to consider a lot, of course, some of you, all of you maybe by now have been approached by people with a, with a look up up there, and I thought it was a great idea. Thought so for years and years, two years, we had one, didn't we have somebody look at tenus that way and give us a cost of seventy to a hundred thousand dollars or something like that? And then we thought we'd have council, have a build weekend and. If we could do it. But now we've been requested, we would consider opening ourselves up to take donations. Yeah, and uh. Carol Clayton is found structural engineer to do these drawings, so. And actually, the uh. She says the plans were done by a civil engineer from Florida, whose mom lives in Deep Bay. She said the plan is based on rough estimates and measurements taken by a local friend of her family here in Deep Bay. I told a number of people, but the project might have, had overwhelming response, positive response. So I feel so grateful that the animal benefit from this so, so much. So. I think it's a great idea, I just don't wanna find ourselves getting into, if you get seven thousand dollars and suddenly we're looking at, putting several hundred thousand dollars that we don't have, that costs is there. But maybe it'll all come forward.
Yeah, I, I should see it is, if the project, I mean, I, I explained to her that we can ask today our, our own engineers. Review the document and sort of certify it. Structural engineer from the U S, or that province, and you have to get stamped by a provincial structural engineer.
Yeah, just the basic ground testing, make sure it doesn't slide down the hill and all that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
But it would be a beautiful spot, as we, as we know, so.
But she is quite, uh, yeah, well, she's confident that she's gonna get a large amount of donations. But she is going to, uh, say this project is something for donations in memory. Doctor Hardey, so it's a big plan. She's also got some, she's talked to a lot of her family members and other friends, and so seems to be a lot of support there. She was in, she sent an email on late Friday afternoon and she was uh, in the scene with this afternoon, in discussion about it, so. She's very excited, uh, the bench is now in place.
Yeah.
This afternoon.
She had a vision tell on where we hold the bench from now, so be aware.
Oh, yeah, we had, is when we had to order the bench from the side of the park. Until we get new, new ones, but that was the only one we had that didn't have a pipeline. So we took, we just rub it for the time being, because of the time.
Uh, just, just to be cautious in memory of Doctor Hardey, but it's not in memory of Doctor Hardey at the moment, so let's not run out and say something that, you know. It will be in memory of Doctor Hardey, just don't let that, that something happen.
Yeah.
So what's our, uh, you've set it up, so we take donations and then are we gonna have somebody look at it now or wait and see how many dollars roll in before we start?
I see that.
Yeah.
I mean, there's other things to look at, but I'd like to get started and uh, see how much money is coming and. Have my, our grant coordinator hold to see whether maybe some funding for that type of infrastructure.
Yeah.
And uh, as well, help go with it, so.
Yeah. Well, I guess we, we're starting investigating.
Yeah, it's starting to make the, get it all, and not, not committing the funds at this, this point, but. It'll be probably a little bit of engineer cost, some little to address that.
Was it, was it the engineer, Night Out or whatever they were called, I looked at before, was it them?
Snow Out.
Snow Out, whatever, yeah.
Has it looked at?
Did he do any paper or just have a look at it?
Just conversation.
Just conversation, okay. Now we've got a concept of, yeah, the concept is there, so, okay.
And maybe we just, getting an estimate, engineer cost with the concept, so we have a place to start. Sometimes engineering is easier to get money to do designs than it is to get the actual grant to the project.
Okay.
If I know that path is still a problem for everyone, which was clear, is there any way you could incorporate the switchback?
Mm-hmm.
Probably could. I would probably help in one of your projects. It's dangerous, you put a machine up everywhere, three or four times a year, it's uh.
I just creep in them all, so.
Yeah. Okay, well, you get the direction, Tom, to start.
Yeah.
Okay, that's the last thing on the agenda. Anybody wanna make a motion to go on?
To move.
Usually it's go.
Certainly.